Okay, it looks like we are live. So, let's get started. So, I will call the Thursday, October, August, sorry. Thinking of cooler times, I guess. Thursday, August 14th, Planning Board Meeting to Order. So, first up is Roll Call. Melinda?
Present.
Jenya?
Present.
And Dan Cobb, also present. So, we are all here this evening. Next up is Approval of Minutes for the July 10th Meeting. Did anybody have any comments or corrections to that document?
Nope.
Nope. Move Approval of the Minutes and Circulate it?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Minutes are approved. Next up is Information Exchange. So, I'll look to you, Kristin.
Okay. The Board did sign off on the Soreno the Apartments Plan and the Coppless Grove Amendment. And those are both filed with the Registered Deeds, so that's all I've done. I have a few updates on the memo that we can get to, case by case if you want to.
Sure.
Application by application.
Yep, that's fine.
But that was about it for me.
Okay. I saw something in your memo. I don't know. Vince, you wanted to update on the Town Budget Process. I see a note here on that, so I'll offer that to you if you wish.
Sure. We had some meetings this week, and on Tuesday, we, I don't want to say we finalized, but we went over and we had some back and forth and did some adjustments. And those will be presented this Tuesday night at 5:30 at the First Workshop. And then the Town Council Meeting follows at 7:00. And we've got something that affects no employees and affects no services. So, I think, in the end, I think we've got something that the taxpayers will be pleased with because it does reduce taxes a little bit, but at the same time, it doesn't affect any service or any employees. And again, 5:30 is the work, I think, maybe it is 5:00, I gotta look. It's either 5:00 or 5:30 is the workshop, and then 7 o'clock is the council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question about that. I remember seeing that there's a town meeting to vote on the budget. Is that the one on Tuesday?
So, on, no. So, what happens on Tuesday is, in the workshop, we'll talk about the budget where it is now. And it's basically a budget that was put forth earlier with, we added in, we had a loan with Andrus Coggin Bank, and it was, I'm making this up, it was like $840,000 and then some other, and we're paying over 6% on it. So, I'd actually made a recommendation that we use our reserve funds that we have extra, we're over the 3/12s, to pay that off. And so, now, on Tuesday, on the workshop, we're gonna go through all the other items that potentially adjustments will be made. People will have an opportunity after each of those items to come up and talk if they would like to about those items. And then, after that, what will happen is, we'll vote on those items, but the vote isn't, it's just saying that's where we want to be, but it's actually not the vote. The vote is really at the 7 o'clock council meeting. So, we're just setting the base for each line item there, but we're not voting it at the workshop, we're gonna vote it at the council meeting. So, again, as we go through each line, we'll say, you know, I'm just thinking about this, you know, employee awards, for example. We'll say employee awards, if anyone wants to come up and talk about it, we'll say what it was, what it is. They'll come up and have a chance to talk or ask questions about it. And then, after that, we would vote on that line item. And then, at the 7 o'clock, we'll tally up all the totals of the different line items, and that would be added, you know, either added to the budget or reduced from the budget. And then, we would vote on it. And then, from there, that would be put forth again next week, and then, in September, we'd have the vote on it. I think it's the 9th?
It's the 9th.
The 9th.
Okay. I just, I have not, I've lived in Gray since 18, and I have not seen a town meeting process. So, that's why I'm just asking.
Sure, no, it's a great question. So, a workshop is just that, it's to say, this is where we're at, and then, we have some recommendations of things that we're looking to do for some adjustments. And then, what we do is, we would go through each line item and give anybody that is here an opportunity. You'd come up, you'd have three minutes to speak.
Okay.
So, on any of the items you want to talk about. And then, after that, we'll end up doing like a vote, hands, and then, what, you know, do we want to approve that number, change that number? And we'll tally those up. And then, at the end, the next meeting will come up at 7:00, and we come up at 7:00, those adjustments will be made one way or the other. And then, we would vote on that. And if that vote is good, then we would add that to the agenda of when we vote on 9/9 along with the other ones, articles that had been passed, I think that we're gonna revisit.
Okay. But I guess what I'm saying is, on Tuesday, it's the Town Council that's voting, the town meeting?
For the public.
For the public is still in September?
Yes, I think to...
That was why I was trying to figure out, like, should we ask people, make sure you come, or like...
Right. If you want to get into the weeds and really go line item by line item, yes, go to that workshop.
Okay, all right. And if you just wanna...
If you want to just vote up or down on the budget, that's September 9.
Then that's September, okay. That's what I was trying to get at.
Hit the nail right on the head.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep, nope, great question. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Anything from the Board? And I don't have anything either, so keep moving along. So, next up is New Business. First up is Egypt Road Sandbrook Subdivision for Preliminary and Final Plan Approval. This is a request by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland, represented by Northeast Civil Solutions for Planning Board Preliminary and Final Plan Review of a Proposal to Create a Two-Lot Minor Subdivision on the 10-plus-or-minus-acre Austin Family Trust Property Abutting the Town of Raymond Line on Egypt Road at Tax Map 6, Lot 308-262-000, in the Lake Zoning District. This proposal is subject to minor subdivision review. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is Jim Fisher. Work with Northeast Civil Solutions, and we have the privilege of being able to represent Habitat here. This is a fairly small project, so the Chairman very effectively just pretty much summed up everything that I was gonna do. When we were here last time, we went over some of the specifics of this two-lot subdivision. It actually encompasses overall 10 acres and three lots, but we're only looking at two building lots this evening, and the approvals for those particular lots. We had asked a couple of questions, you had asked a couple of questions last time, we've addressed those. You have some additional information in your packets that we didn't have last time, we now do. Specifically, the Main Historic Preservation Commission letter stating that there's no issues as far as they're concerned. This is a wholly undeveloped area, so that's not surprising, but it's now official. And then, we had a couple of questions regarding some further notes to the plan, which we have added to the plan. So, what you see is the, what we're looking at is preliminary and final approvals based on the plan that you have before you, with whatever conditions or comments that you may want to make as Board. So, given that there's not a whole lot to this, and we did go through much of it last time, what I'd like to do, in the interest of brevity, is to just address the comments per Town Staff, and then, any other comments that the Board may have later on, I'd be happy to address those at that time. Specifically, number one, talks about the driveway in the Forest Main, appears to cross some wetlands. That is true, but the wetland impact is so small that it actually doesn't even require a permit. And because it's, this is for the well and the septic system that is serving the first lot. And once that goes, those are subgrade lines, obviously, and once that goes into effect, then everything is put back to the way it was. So, we're not ultimately disturbing any of the wetlands, other than during a very short period of construction for those subgrade utility lines, then everything goes back. Toward that end, the disturbance is so small that it's actually about 1/5 of the area that we would otherwise be allowed, that anybody's allowed to be able to disturb without a DEP permit. So, there's no issues as far as that is concerned. Number two, driveways.
I'm just gonna interrupt you for one second, if I may.
Sure.
Just because I also use this as our checklist, that we button everything up. And I just want to ensure the Main Historic Preservation Commission sign off, that was the email that we got this afternoon, right?
No. The one you got this afternoon was for Mr. Yulet's project, the Western Woods.
That's the other one, okay. So, is this one still not yet submitted, then?
This one, I believe, was in this later submittal. I either missed it and didn't include it in the memo correctly, or it came in after I'd worked on that piece of the memo.
Okay. So, we're all good?
We are good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Driveways. Talking about the engineers, the traffic engineers that we had go out to take a look at this, they determined, as we had discussed last time, that for the first lot of the lot that is literally abutting the Raymond Town Line, that there is a site distance, site distance can be met, but there needs to be some vegetation clearing on that side of the road facing toward the Raymond direction, everything else is fine. So, we went to the Department of Transportation, who has jurisdiction over the road, and they said, as they typically do, sure, no problem, you clear it, we won't have an issue with that. Interestingly enough, and I bring that up is because, as far as the driveway permits are concerned, we have to get the driveway permits through the state, through the Department of Transportation. And they will not issue those permits until that clearing is done. So, we're absolutely happy to have our engineer go back out there when the clearing is completed and be able to provide that information to Kristin, to the planner. But we can't even get an entrance permit for clearing of the lots until the DOT actually signs those permits. So, it will be a state permit that will also be provided to the town, as is typical through the DOT. We will be going out there, or Habitat will be going out there to do that clearing. Doesn't involve a whole lot, but it needs to be cleared, and so, we'll take care of that, and then, that site distance opens up to more than we actually need. There was also talking about grading. The engineers couldn't quite determine whether there was gonna be a necessity for any actual grading of the shoulder, meaning lowering it by just a small degree, because the vegetation out there is so overgrown up the side of the road that they couldn't tell, they couldn't see through it. So, they indicated, as is certainly their right, and it's prudent to do, that we need to address the vegetation, we may also have to address some slight clearing for the actual site distances. If that's the case, then we can certainly do that. That's all within the DOT right of way, anyway. And they have, again, acquiesced to that, as they typically do. Basically, as long as they don't have to pay for it, they say, knock yourself out, you can do what you need to for permission based on what the planning boards in any various towns will approve. So, we should be all set there, not being able to move forward with any clearing or driveway permits until the DOT actually signs off on that. We had a question about open space criteria. We have, as you had requested last time, included open space. I'm not at all surprised, and that we can do that, we did do it, you'll see that on your plans. We had made the comment last time that we weren't really sure that that would be necessary, primarily because there's over 1,000 acres of IF&amp;W land, both in Gray and in Raymond, that are surrounding us. We're like a very, very, we, meaning that subdivision that we're talking about, it's like a very small piece of the inside of a horseshoe, surrounded, again, by over 1,000 acres of open space beyond that. And there is an accessible parking area on the Raymond side for that land for the public. So, what we did was, we included, as we could, still meeting minimum lot sizes and frontages, et cetera, the 5% that the Town of Gray requires for open space, and that is shown on your plans. That leads into the functional ownership of that. It's fractionally owned by the two lots. Typically, what happens is, when we create open space areas on subdivisions that are 3, 4, 30 lots, whatever it might be, there's common ownership, and that is typically stated in a homeowners association document. In this particular case, there's only two homeowners. So, the ownership is between, is fractionally between those two, which means that they don't have, you know, I don't own this side of the line, you know, this guy doesn't own that side of the line, it's common between them. So, that's the fractional ownership, and that's what is shown on the lots and the plan at the back of both of those lots. The waiver request you've got before you, we can certainly address that at the end of this. As far as the deed and plan notes, we're happy to do that. We've got mockups of the deeds. Obviously, we don't want to make those deeds real until we've actually got some lots to be able to, having been approved, to be able to do that. But you will be provided, and the assessor will be provided with those deeds when they are actually created, and Habitat actually sells those to third parties. As far as notes, under deed and plan notes, the wooded buffer strip, there's 50 feet along the front that is to be preserved. We did not get that actual language in there, so we're gonna show that on that plan, that can be a condition of approval. It is there, it's just not stipulated. So, we're happy to do that as a condition of approval. It's just a note to be added, and with the 50-foot line for the setback. The amendment to Note S12, updated to show that minor regrading of the road embankment may be necessary. I'm not really sure, we can add that note if you want to, but as we just discussed, I'm not, that's sort of redundant, because we can't get the permits from the DOT until we actually do that grading, if it's even necessary. So, what's gonna happen is, we are gonna go out there and clear this area, this site distance. The engineer, the main licensed traffic engineer's gonna go out and determine that, as can Director of Public Works if they wish, to be able to say, okay, it works, here's the site distance criteria, this is no issue. At that point, DOT will issue the permits, and any additional information that's on the plan is sort of moot. Again, we can add it if you want to, but it doesn't really, we're already locked in with, as far as the state is concerned, toward that end. Waivers, again, if granted, we'll state those waivers on the plan. And then, the net residential area and the net residential density. The remaining land has not been reviewed as a buildable lot, this is a comment from the planner. We do have under S, this is the last sentence under that section, where it says, we've added Note S11, which addresses further division, which means that the lot, the remaining property, notwithstanding these two lots that we're looking at, which is part of the subdivision, has to, that note states that anybody who wants to do any type of construction, or permission for construction, building permit on that lot, has to come back to the Planning Board, anyway, because that lot is part of that subdivision. We can add this other note, the remaining land has not been reviewed as a buildable lot, but it would have to be reviewed, anyway, for somebody to come back to the Planning Board for subdivision approval. Again, it just seems like overkill, but we can certainly put that in if you want to. Other than that, it's just a comment on the waivers, and I'm happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time. Anybody from the Board have any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. No questions yet, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Before we get into our discussion, do you need to open this up to the public? So, I will do that at 7:17. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Don't see any takers, so I will close the public comment. So, we got a few items to discuss here. Driveway and sightlines being the first one. So, you heard his proposal and narrative on the driveways. What's everyone's thoughts on the site distance and making that a condition of approval?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I appreciate that the normal process with the DOT would shake out some of the things that we're asking, but we have seen in the past, sometimes, that plans that are very explicit aren't followed. So, better to put the things that are important on them, even if, in fact, other methods will confirm them or make sure that, so, it does sometimes feel a little overkill, but sometimes, even when there is overkill, things still get sideways.
Sure.
So, I think handling it via a condition, as opposed to delaying anything any further, I think that the staff, in collaboration with DOT or whoever, can sort of confirm the sightlines and figure out if there needs to be any regrading. I don't think, I think that can be handled in a note, hope that's my thought on that.
Jenya?
I have no questions.
Okay. I have to admit, I'm not a huge fan of it, being a condition, but I'm okay with proceeding with it, given that, I think, it's been stated by your engineer that it can be met. It seems like it's, would be a stretch that there's gonna be a problem there. So, I think it's okay that the vegetation clearing and grading take place after and it's confirmed afterward. I think that's a very minor risk there. I guess the other piece that neither of you spoke to is whether we want to require a driveway permit for each lot, which would be one more, like, layer of making sure that nothing gets missed.
Is that, would that be, I don't know, are driveway permits normal?
Just before you answer that, I think I heard you say you need one anyways.
It's a state road.
Right.
So, the entrance permits actually come from the Department of Transportation.
Yeah. So, if I'm getting it right, they're already going to have a state permit, so...
We do have a permitting process here, too.
I guess the difference is, well, right, so the difference is, is that with the town process, the state may not know about the condition of approval, so they're just, can just go and get a driveway permit from the state, from the town. If we think it needs the control of the condition of approval, they can have notes in their town permitting process to withhold the driveway permit until that condition is met. That would be the difference, I think, right?
Yeah, typically, we've been handling driveways in subdivision where, if it's shown in a specific location or a specific window on the plan that you approve, that we're not requiring to also get a driveway permit through codes, because the, we have to mark up the grades and the width and all of the other standards that they need to meet, the side distance, on the face of the plan that you're already approving. So, we don't feel the need to double that. In this case, I, you may want to have that through the town, or have it, like you mentioned, like a condition that you're showing in the DOT one, because it is the same standard, to my understanding, for the Public Works Director.
Does staff have a preference on that point, or no?
I mean, part of the reason we've handled it that way, tried to present it to you that way for approval, is because it kind of seems like doubling it up, it's an extra fee, and it's like you already did all this work with the engineering, and particularly where they have to do the extra step of getting the DOT permit.
Yeah.
I feel like that might be sufficient for driveway permitting, in my opinion. But we definitely want the confirmation, engineering confirmation about site distance. But like you said, that'll be part of that permit, so if that's good enough for you to have that be submitted to Public Works and Codes and not have to do a whole nother...
I think it's probably fine. That's my thought.
I think so, too. I don't, it's not typical, I guess it depends on where the subdivision is, but in many cases, the only permitting process would be with the town, whereas here, we happen to have a state as well, so I think we can...
Is actually a state superseding the town, or is it...
Yeah, probably.
It's the same, from my understanding, from what Tim says.
Same standard.
Same standards.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, we know where we're gonna land on that, when we get to the motion, then. Next would be comments on the plan notes, as suggested. So, I think you're good with all the plan notes, correct?
I'm sorry?
The plan notes, under number five, A through D.
Yes.
You are okay with incorporating all those?
We can certainly do that. We'll state that plan note when we show the wooded buffer strip. The, we can put on the note that minor grading of the road may be necessary, but it's, we, we'll just put it on there, that's okay. It doesn't really make any difference, it's either gonna work or it's not gonna work. So, but we can certainly add that. Yes is the answer to your question.
Okay. Perfect, that's all I need here. So, is the Board supportive of including those notes?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I made a note for myself, I don't think I saw those in the proposed motion, so we need to make sure that those get referenced. I might have missed it.
It's number three. Ah, there we go. Notes and amendments as described.
Ah, as described, okay.
If that works for you.
Yeah, okay, that works. I was looking for them to be written out, but that works.
We can call them out if you want to.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to make sure they were captured. Open space, so I think, to me, they addressed what our concern was with the open space, and then, the only question is fractional ownership, and when we get to it, a waiver on the 25-foot access with the road that doesn't exist because they don't need one. Any issues with the open space?
I think they met that standard.
Yep. I'm okay with that as well, so I don't see any issue. The fractional ownership is one of the methods that's acceptable to the town, right? So, yep, I think we're okay there. Monumentation, I think we already talked about this last time and agreed that it would be okay, given most of these pins are called out on the IF&amp;W survey. Thank you for writing your narrative that supported that, but it's helpful for our waiver granting. So, I think we're okay, we had already agreed on that one last time.
Yep.
So, then, there's granting of preliminary and final concurrently. There's a number of findings of fact that need to be met, and they've provided a document to that note that they're met. Kristin, you agree that they're met?
Yes, yeah, B was not applicable. That wasn't really necessarily a waiver, but not applicable to this project.
Sorry, I'm talking about the, I'm on number five, the...
Right.
Of granting preliminary and final, not the waivers.
Right, I said, number, well, letter B.
Okay.
Letter B is not particularly applicable to this project.
Yeah.
So, while it says you agree to approve a waiver, it's not really applicable to ask for a waiver, because they don't apply.
Right. Yep, gotcha, sorry. So, I think we're good there, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, I think everything is in order to me to go to, oh, well, I guess we haven't... So, there's two waivers in front of us, so we'll do that first. We already talked about the monuments, and I talked about the 25-foot of road frontage, but I assume we're okay with that.
Yeah.
Looks like a sensible thing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think we can work on a motion to grant those waivers, then.
All right. I move to approve the following waivers for the request by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland, represented by Northeast Civil Solutions for Planning Board Preliminary and Final Plan Review of a Proposal to Create a Two-Lot Minor Subdivision on the 10-plus-or-minus-acre Austin Family Trust Property Abutting the Town of Raymond Line on Egypt Road at Tax Map 6, Lot 308-262-000, in the Lake Zoning District. This proposal is subject to minor subdivision review. The 401-401, period, 1-3, period, 1D requirement for stone and concrete monuments at all property corners, allowing such monuments to be iron pins slash capped rebar. And secondly, the 401, period, 1-3, period, 6, period, B4 requirement for 25-foot of road frontage for the designated open space due to the nature of development, not having an interior roadway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
No discussion, all in favor? And that's unanimous, so you have your waivers. So, now, we need to deem the motion complete, so we can do both preliminary and final at the same time, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move to find the application by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland, represented by Northeast Civil Solutions, complete per 401.7.1E. This proposal is for Planning Board Preliminary and Final Plan Review of a Two-Lot Minor Subdivision on the 10-plus-or-minus-acre Austin Family Trust Property Abutting the Town of Raymond Line on Egypt Road at Tax Map 6, Lot 308-622-000, in the Lake Zoning District. This proposal is subject to minor subdivision review.
Is there a second on that?
Oh, I have a second.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? And that's unanimous as well, so the application is complete. Okay, let's look at our preliminary and final approval motion. So, there is a placeholder number five, which...
Is for the waivers that we just...
That will be included.
And 6C is not applicable, this one.
Right, yep. Yep, so 6C can be deleted. I think everything else is okay, as written.
When I make this motion, rather than reading out the placeholder, can I just reference it?
Yes.
Because we aren't changing it, actually. The only change, really, would be to remove C of the 6.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I guess I would just state that the placeholders and, you know, that it's incorporated or something.
Okay.
Whatever you like.
All right, are we ready? I move to approve the application by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland, represented by Northeast Civil Solutions for Planning Board Preliminary and Final Plan Review of of a proposal to create a two-lot minor subdivision on the 10-plus-or-minus-acre Austin Family Trust property abutting the Town of Raymond line on Egypt Road at tax map six, lot 308-262-000, in the Lake Zoning District. The proposal is subject to minor subdivision review and is subject to the following conditions referenced in the planning board memo of today's date, numbered one through four. In addition, the number five placeholder condition is included, and the number six condition is included without subsection C.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Richard.
Okay, thank you.
Just trying to take all available space.
All right, next up is Weston Woods subdivision. This is also preliminary and final plan. This is a request by 519 Morgan Meadows LLC, represented by Caleb Ulliot, for planning board preliminary and final plan review of a proposal to create the four-lot Weston Woods subdivision on his 25.45-plus-or-minus-acre property at the end of Morgan Meadow Drive off Totten Road at tax map 57, lot 23-81, in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. Welcome back.
I'm back.
It's been a while.
My name's Caleb Ulliot, I live at 9 Keystone Drive, Windham, Maine. I own the property at 20 Morgan Meadows Drive in Gray, and I'm looking to do the four-lot subdivision that has been submitted and is in front of you guys this evening. Since the last time I came in, I have, I believe, managed to fulfill all of the requests and additional items, update the plans, road profile, meet with the town in regards to driveway entrances, et cetera. And obviously, we have a lot of items on the memo, and some waivers and stuff to discuss as well, so I'm not really sure where we want to start, but.
Yeah.
I could, just a couple of memo updates.
Sure.
The, there was some mention about the soil study, and I did check in with our consulting engineer, felt that for this particular site and size of project, that the submitted materials, his opinion that the submitted materials were sufficient, particularly where you're considering a waiver to the Class A high-intensity soil survey.
And, sorry, who is that from, again?
Will Haskell, our consultant.
That was from, okay.
Yep, so I did check in with him on that, so that piece, I think, is mentioned in one of these, that's number four. So just letting you know, his opinion, advice to you, was that the licensed soil scientist and review was sufficient.
So does that mean they don't need a waiver? Because they've gotten
It's a separate, you haven't granted any waivers yet, but he was saying, like, particularly if you're considering a waiver, and due to the size of the project, and the location, and the soil is onsite, he felt his advice to you was that it was sufficient. And also, the main historic preservation letter, which is number seven in the notes, is now in hand. That's the one that I sent you earlier today, that we just got this afternoon.
Thank you.
And we have one comment I can share when we get to public hearing, and that was it.
All right, any initial questions from the board? I'll walk through all the staff comments next.
I'll just
I'll, I'll sort of scroll through the comments.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, all right. So, is there anything in the staff comments that are of concern to you, you don't agree with, just so we kind of have a heads up? Are you generally okay with what Kristin's laid out in there?
No, I think that's all, I think that's all reviewed, that Kristin sent out.
Okay. All right, so there's a few things we're going to have to provide some guidance and voting on, so we can talk through it as we get to it. So, the first one is basically the, a lot of writing about the topic of having 11 dwelling units on a road that would typically have 10. And I guess when I had first seen this, I wasn't a big fan of it, but as I read through the whole history of what had happened, and the support of staff, and basically, I think the alternative, if we don't grant it, is that that person will put a driveway on Totten Road, which is not desirable. So it ends up being a worse solution for everyone.
Yep.
So, to me, it seems like a sensible and unique waiver to grant. The times, the one, the times when I'm particularly not interested in these types of waivers is when somebody just wants to build one more house, so they ask for one, and then that becomes a slippery slope of how many extra do you grant? But to me, this one's unique, it's specific to the site, and it's, you know, not something that sets any kind of precedent. That's just my thought on that one.
Yeah, that's, I wholeheartedly agree. One need, I would say everything you just said, but when it comes to waivers, if we grant them, we don't want them to be making everyone think they can get that waiver. Should be an exception, not the rule.
Yep. Anything additional, Jenya on that?
No, I'll agree with you, with everything you said.
Okay, so then they're looking, we might just all discuss it here, it's just as easy to do it this way. So looking for high-intensity soil study waiver request. So, we have some advice that it's not required, and Will has stated that the person that gave that advice is an acceptable, acceptably professional person.
My only question is, are we being advised that it would be reasonable and appropriate under the circumstances to grant a waiver, or that no waiver is needed because enough information has been provided? I'm still a little fuzzy on that.
So they're, they're two separate questions. He's asking for a waiver from the high-intensity soil survey, which, as I outlined here, kind of seems like it might, when he first came to you, there was the question of, is this major or is it minor?
Uh-huh.
And it's really kind of walking the line, because it's an extension. He is building some road, but the road's there, and it's only a few lots, so it was, it was kind of just pushed over to that, that major side. So I think at the time, you had said that you might be more open to some waivers for some of those major subdivision pieces
Yeah.
That might not entirely apply here. So that's what this piece is.
Okay.
This, the other piece regarding
So, yeah, so they're not saying it's not required, or it is required.
Okay, okay, that's what I, got it.
Yeah, it would need to be formally waived. The other piece is that there's, there's language in the ordinance about soil information that asks for a certified soil scientist to submit it.
That's number four.
And this is from a licensed soil scientist, so I was just lying in that because it didn't meet the letter of the ordinance, but the input from the engineer regarding that piece is that you're good, particularly if you're already considering this waiver. He said that, that fits with that sort of determination.
Thank you for that clarity.
Just a question on that topic, is the ordinance language incorrect, or soil scientist licensed?
That, there are different levels. That was language that Doug had put in there, because there are different levels of soil knowledge.
Okay, we don't need to dig, we don't need to dig into it. It happens.
I heard that.
Happens a lot with engineers, and, you know, they call them registered versus licensed, so that's, I was wondering.
I was joking at your pun. You need to dig into it, that's what it's like.
That was an unintentional one. Okay, so, do we feel like this project meets the high-intensity soil survey barrier, or is it something that could be waived? The other thing that we had talked about, just to finish, is I think we were less interested in, like, kind of stormwater and wetland-type waivers, it was more around things like this where he was on the border, and we didn't, you know, we wanted to be reasonable with the level of rigor.
I think, given the circumstances here, that a waiver would be appropriate in this limited situation.
For the, just, and we're talking just the high-intensity soil survey?
That's right, number two, yep, I agree.
I really don't think it's needed, in this case.
And I'd be okay with it, as long as staff doesn't have any concerns on that one? Okay. All right, so we'll probably be okay there, then? All right, stormwater management plan. What are the board's thoughts on this one? So they're looking for a stormwater management plan waiver as well.
I have, I have a couple of questions about this. So I'm familiar with Morgan Meadows, and although it says we're not in the watershed of a great pond, I know the IFNW land does have a fair amount of wetlands and water, and is, does this just not drain towards it? I'm just sensitive to everything when it comes to stormwater these days. Our storms are just crazy, so it sounds like staff thought this seems reasonable to grant a waiver in this case. Even though it's not in the watershed of a great pond, there is water not far from this. Is it just not draining towards it? Is that?
I think I would lean on the statement from the engineer that Caleb provided. The, I think the, the language that was catching me is the ordinance language that talks about changing drainage patterns. I don't see that it would necessarily change the drainage patterns all that much, because we're doing a small extension of road. And the homes are, are set up near the road, further from the wetland.
Yeah.
Looking at the plan, you can, you know, judge it yourself, but the, the key language I was looking at was the, if the addition of the impervious surfaces is less than 5% of the area of the subdivision, that you could waive submission. And the information he provided did state that it, it meant that. It's not, it's not near 5%
Okay.
Well, my concern is like, is the severity of the storms lately. And my opinion that it should be done. Waivers should not be granted.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm hesitant on the storm, any stormwater waivers, just because of, like, the, if something goes sideways, it turns into a big problem later.
Yeah.
So I think I'm not a fan of that waiver, just for that reason.
Yeah. It's, I understand what you're thinking, and you're trying to just, you know, this is not a substantial change to the area, but even what's there right now might be a problem, even, and then you're going to add to it and potentially make it worse. We just don't know, because you don't have really a plan. Just, when it comes to storms, they're just, they're just doing things that, even, even people that were
Four inches in half an hour?
Yeah, just crazy things.
It's a tremendous amount.
So, yeah, I'm in agreement, that that's not an appropriate waiver to grant.
Okay. All right, soil information, we have our info from Will Haskell. I think there's, is there anything else here? Yeah, so he's good with that information. Nothing needed from us on road considerations. Nothing needed us from number six. Number seven we have, so I think at this point, I'll open it up to a public hearing. So 7:44, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Please, step up.
I'm not sure what the format is.
Yep, so step up to the podium and introduce yourself. I think there's a sign-in sheet. You can write your name, and let us know what you've got to say.
My name is Richard Despens, I own a piece of property on 30 Marstree Drive, and Caleb is known to me, we've talked quite a bit. When I got the, when I got the notice in the mail, I, I thought long and hard, and he and I bounced a couple of text messages back and forth, and the question that I had for him regarding building, building the property or building the development there was that, that hill where that drive is, is a, is a blind drive if you're coming from 202 towards, towards the old Portland Road. And since 2020, we've increased the tax ma, the tax map in the, in the Town of Gray immensely, so traffic on that road has quadrupled. So, in addition to the quadrupled traffic, the, the rate of speed has also come up. The, the traffic from 202 has also increased, and the speed has increased there. I'm wondering what, what the potential is for additional safety concerns there, because there, even before, even before he announced this, the, you know, it's, there have been many near misses there. So is there, is there some sort of process where there's a study that can be done in regards to the safety of that turn? Because it is a blind turn, if you're coming from the old Portland Road towards 202.
So you're talking about traveling on Totten Road?
Yes.
With Morgan Meadow Drive being on
It's right, it's, it's almost at the top. And if you're traveling from 202 towards Marstree Drive, anybody turning into that driveway is, is at risk. Back in 2001, there was, there were only two houses on that road, now there are five, and we're talking about putting another four in. So, you know, that's going to increase the, the traffic in and out of that driveway by, you know, potentially, you know, six or seven cars, depending on who purchases the home.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Let me, before we get to that, I'll just get all the public comment, before we do any responses. Anybody else from the public?
Six, real quick.
My name is Carl Gimple. I own the property on Lawrence Road that butts up to the back of this proposed development. And I don't have anything specifically against this development, per se, but similar to what the last speaker had to say, the way we're developing our communities isn't controlled by road frontage like it used to be, with the widespread use of subdevelopments. So the traffic count and the sprawl that we're putting into our rural areas, I personally think is overwhelming our infrastructure. And I think in the short term, there's some gains, because we need housing, and people have a right to do what they want with their land. In the long term, I think our taxes are going to skyrocket, our safety's going to go down, and the quality of living in a place like Gray is going to be vastly diminished. So it's a very general comment, nothing specific to this development, per se, but I think we're, we're not headed in a great direction with our, our planning and our long-term use of land in this area.
Thank you, appreciate the comment. Anybody else from the public? I don't see anyone online. So Kristin, I know you got one email that you wanted to share as well.
Yeah, just to put it into the public record, we did have a comment from a butter, Stephen Wood, who had some questions about the impact on wildlife, and how close the clearing was going to be in the rear of lot four, which, which abuts his property. So I did respond with him, we had some back and forth today, explaining where the clearing limits are, proposed, around the house and Septic, and showed him the IFNW map and all of that. So I think he felt, he said, right now, it is still forested woods, and it is in its natural state, and seemed to be good with, with the way it's proposed. So as long as that clearing is respected around, around the lot four home, he was, he seemed amenable to that. So as long as that clearing is respected around, around the lot, the lot four home, he was, he seemed amenable to that.
Okay. Alright. So I think I'll just work back in, in reverse order. So thank you for your comments. I just did want to provide a couple of related pieces of feedback. So the, even though we are the planning board and that's what we're called, we don't really plan as much as approve to the ordinances that are in place. But we do have our town council liaison here. So the council is the body that does set the ordinances. So, you know, he can certainly take that back to his colleagues and, you know, work that into their priorities. The other thing that I'll say is recently the state has made a number of changes that limit our and the council's ability even more to control some of what we're all concerned about. So it kind of, we're, we're limited in what we can do, but I, I hear your concerns and I know a lot of other people do as well.
Is there a way that, you're saying that the road is blind on one side? Or is there, is there a way to have that road access at the peak?
Sorry, I was working backwards. Yeah, I hadn't gotten to that one yet.
So that's-
That was the, yeah, that was the, so I was speaking, I was speaking to the general comment.
No, that was my only question.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yep, so I just want to make sure people weren't confused. I obviously probably shouldn't have done it in that order. I just thought it was the easy one to maybe talk about first. So, okay, so the first one was the, the blind curve and the sightlines. And I thought, Kristen, I would start with you, maybe just from a town perspective. We've got a road that is already there and would have been reviewed for sightlines. And now, you know, what level of re-review can take place? And what opportunities do we have here for like whatever solutions are appropriate? Whether it's signage, clearing? We didn't do a sight lock here.
I think it's, it's challenging because the applicant does not own the lots that abut Totten Road. So it's not like we can ask him to put a clearing easement on those or, you know, like try to, try to improve the site distance. So he doesn't own those. The way that this was developed was that the ones right against Totten Road are their own subdivision. And then there are three lots behind that that for some reason were not handled as an amendment to that due to a legal opinion at the time. And now there's this piece which is going to be its own subdivision because it was not, this would not be an amendment to the one in the front. So they're really, they're separate pieces and it is an existing road. It's, it's a tough one to address. He did provide the traffic counts and that's what's required for the ordinance. As far as like addressing the safety of the site distance at that point, that would have been something that should have been done at the point of the approval of the climax subdivision in the front.
Right.
And it's, it's not something, you know, that he has the ability to really address directly as far as ownership goes. Like normally we would ask for something similar to what the Habitat for Humanity site where you know, you've got to do some grading, you're going to do some clearing or you need an easement on your, you know, on your property to, to allow that. But it's, that's a tough piece to address at this point in the development process. That's why we like to look at them as a, as a whole. But this one is not, this is a unique situation.
I was pretty sure that that was going to be your answer, but I wanted at least everyone to hear it so everyone had the same information. Go ahead.
Sorry. I just know the last meeting, we did have the surveyors and the engineering group go out and they, I mean, they did shoot all those lines and we were beyond the requirements for site distances and stuff for the, for the town roads, so.
For your driveways?
Oh, no, no, for the actual road.
For the actual connection.
Yeah. We, we must have submitted that because I knew that was part of the-
It's on the face of the plan. The site distance is on the face of the plan.
Okay, so we have our site distances and it's not really something, I don't know what we, we don't even have the ability to open much up here.
Yeah, like you said, it is reflected on the face of the plan. But again, it doesn't change your perception as a driver when you're out there if you feel like it's not enough. I can bring it up with Public Works.
Well, that was going to be my question is, at a minimum, maybe you can bring it up with Public Works and see if some signage is, can be considered there at least.
The, the one other thing that occurs to me is I think one of them, and of course, like all of us, we've driven up and down 202 and yeah, everyone's going so fast. And part of the reason they're going so fast is that everyone interprets gray as you get through it. There was a big project that we, a lot of members of the town talked about and worked on about calming and slowing the traffic down in the village, which would necessarily also result in smoothing out and lowering traffic speeds probably out as well. And I don't know where that's going to go given everything. But the, one of bigger problems is that we've just turned ourselves into a thoroughfare. And that until that changes and the road, the whole road has to really redesign so that people don't feel like it's appropriate to go that fast. It's really going to be hard. You can put up signs all you want. It's going to be hard for them to slow down.
It's a state road. So we can't do anything about it. Town can address DOT, but DOT usually-
Well, the, the plan for the middle of the town was-
So we're starting to get off topic a little bit here.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that so much is out of our hands and there's bigger, bigger problems to be had, but yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the board on the public comment? I think the third one, the person was, it was resolved with Kristen, so there's nothing there. Okay, I'm going to keep us moving along then. So the, our discussion items, we've already aligned on number one for later.
Can I ask for a point for clarification on number one? And you mentioned that part of your support was due to it being a safer access for that lot. They currently have an access via Totten Road, via right-of-way over the abutting lot here.
Right.
Do, does the board want to address closing that? Or do you want to allow him to have effectively two driveways? One internal and one off Totten? Because he would be effectively having two if you approve this. I just want to raise that.
I, I didn't understand that. I thought he made this access in lieu of the other one. I thought he had a right-of-way, but he wasn't actually using it.
Right, I know, you can really speak to that better than I can. But I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you want, if you want that closed.
Thank you for bringing that up. I guess we should know what, what's the state of that access? Do you know? I mean, this isn't-
Not 100%. I mean, I know before, prior, he had access through that right-of-way to Totten. And then his primary was made onto Morgan Meadows since I've become owner. So now it's kind of a gray area buffer between the two properties, the, the previously existing one. Like trailer storage and plows and things like that.
So the main dwelling access is onto your road?
The primary one was made onto Morgan Meadow.
And the secondary is like to Garat?
Was the previously, the previous, the one that's approved out on the town.
I mean, I don't know how, how much we want to get into this. We're, we're doing a favor. We haven't seen it in person. We've not been party to all the conversations that Codes has had. I would, I think I would tend to say from our perspective, I might put out there that, I mean, there's, there's an active notice of violation. This is what I was reading with Codes. And Codes and staff are supportive of granting this waiver. And I would say from our perspective, we don't have the information to make a recommendation about closing the other access and all that, having not been involved. I would suggest we leave that piece of it to the Codes and staff to resolve. That's my, that's my first thought that comes to mind. I feel like we're not going to make an informed decision here.
And they have the power to do it, close that other access point if they wanted to or if they-
I don't even know. That's why I don't want to-
It's, we certainly don't, I think, regardless.
We might.
Yeah, I, I think the, I would have to double check with our code officer, but my understanding is the language does not necessarily restrict you to a single driveway. But it could be part of the discussion. Yeah, that's a Codes question. I'm not 100% sure regarding authority. But you're, as long as I'm understanding your intent, I can convey that to Codes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, my intent with the waiver would be to not, we're not creating, you know, we're not creating additional density. He's got a right to put 10.
Yeah.
Or have 10 in the end. And that's what he would have if this access of questionable legality were not there. So we're, we're getting him what he deserves. Right? So there's that piece. It's not like he's asking for more than what's in the, in the code. And then this other piece is kind of a messy thing that, that comes along that we're doing our part to make a little bit better. But I think beyond that, I, I, anything that we come up with is not going to be informed enough for me to make a vote on.
And, and even if the access on Morgan Meadow by this, this rogue house, it's, it's really better and safer that it is accessing on Morgan Meadow than on Totten. So the, the, the waiver need is actually better for the overall neighborhood.
I guess what I would say, and I would be comfortable putting from the, the planning board is that the primary access for that property must remain on Morgan Meadow, Morgan Mae. Right? I think that's fair enough and that's our intent is that-
I think that's right.
That the primary access stay there and, you know, whether that person gets cut some slack on the back access to their garage or not, that is outside of what we need to get into. That's my opinion.
I like that.
The town can take that. Okay. Alright. Sorry. Okay, so we talked about two of the waiver requests. Soil survey, we're okay on stormwater. We were not going to grant. There's also a request for a streetlight waiver at the end of the dead end. So I'd be supportive of that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be fine when we get there. Okay, now the same question in front of us for preliminary and final approval. We need to agree that the same three conditions are met that we agreed last time. So is everything in order there, Kristen, in your opinion?
No, you're not granting a waiver from the stormwater management plan, so you're not meeting the-
Oh, right. Thank you. Okay, so that, this one, I guess it's not applicable because we won't do a final. I was getting ahead of myself.
And there's really no benefit in doing preliminary now?
Well, there is. I mean, I don't, the more we can get done tonight, the better. I mean, I don't see any reason not to. I assume you would like to get preliminary approval tonight, right?
Absolutely.
Yep. So, yeah. So I think we can handle the waivers. We should be able to handle the, well, can it be complete? I guess without the stormwater that we're asking for? I don't know if we have to wait on that one or not.
In the past, I think we've, we've hesitated only because if you're required of some redesign because it seems like it will probably not. But until stormwater has been done, it's hard to say.
Can it be done conditional?
Well, that's-
I mean, that's, it doesn't really gain, I mean, we can, it takes only a couple of minutes to deem something complete. So that's no problem doing next time. We can definitely get through the waivers tonight.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about preliminary, whether we can kind of should get through that.
If you don't find it complete, it's probably not appropriate to grant.
Right.
I guess I would have handled it in the past.
Yep.
But we can do preliminary and final the next time you come back with your stormwater. You know, assuming nothing changes that affects anything else. So it doesn't mean another-
Right.
Two more meetings or anything like that.
Okay, yep. So let's get through the waivers.
Okay. Move to approve the following waivers for the request by 519 Morgan Meadows LLC, LLC, represented by Caleb Ullit?
Ullit.
For planning board preliminary and, for planning board preliminary and final review of a proposal to create a four-lot subdivision on his 25.45 plus or minus acre property at the end of Morgan Meadow Drive off Totten Road at Tax Map 57, Lot 23-81 in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. This proposal, proposal is subject to major subdivision review. And the, the following waivers are being granted. Maximum of 10 dwelling units served by a minor rural street per table 401.13.16-2, allowing a maximum of 11 dwelling units to use Morgan Meadow Drive. Waiver number two, 401.7.4, Class A, H-I-S-S Soil Survey. And waiver number three, 401.13.15.4, Streetlights.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, so I think we've reached the end of where we can get tonight. So come back with your stormwater plan and that will get you complete. And then assuming no design changes from the stormwater plan, I think you should be in good shape for your preliminary and final. Almost there.
Almost there. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Alright. So I guess just on this one, when we get to the, I just wanted to make sure there are no questions on any of the conditions and whatnot, but we're going to have to do it next time at this point.
Yeah, it's going to be.
What's that?
I think the only piece that would change at number four would be remove the stormwater plan and the historic preservation is in, so 5A would go. If you have other edits left in there.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure there's, there's some reference to homeowners association documents and stuff like that. I just, I don't want any more, any more hangups. Like, you know, I don't want them to get, have to come back again.
Right, those are typically okay to do after, like as a condition.
Right. Yep, okay. Alright. Alright, one more. We have, are on to continued business. This is SE Development Maple Leaf Subdivision Preliminary Plan. A request by SE Development represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers for Planning Board Preliminary Plan Review of a Proposal to Create the Three-Lot Maple Leaf Subdivision on the 17.21 plus or minus acre parcel at 30 Campbell Shore Road at Tax Map 56, Lots 17-19-02 in the Rural Residential Agricultural Zoning District and the Shoreland Zoning Stream Protection District. This proposal is subject to Shoreland Zoning, a zoning board of appeals decision and to major subdivision review. Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, my name is JP Conley. I work for DM Roma Consulting Engineers and I'm here representing SE Development, Inc. for our subdivision off of Campbell Shore Road. Going through the staff memo and the engineering review memo, I believe the discussion I want to focus on tonight is the open space. We actually have open space shown on the new plan. We ran away from the in lieu fee as fast as we could. And so I think what we needed to, to talk about tonight is the, whether the open space that we've designated is appropriate so that when we do get our DEP and Army Corps permits and are ready to come back- so that when we do get our DEP and Army Corps permits and are ready to come back for final, we don't have to make too many more changes. So where we came from with the open space, if you don't mind me just getting into that.
Sure.
We looked at areas of the site that we could designate for open space to achieve the 5% of the total property. And effectively, we'd like to keep the open space in an area that is near the developed portion of the site. We don't want the open space to become developed and/or cleared. It should remain in its natural state as this, if there were development, you'd have to come back for planning amendment and as well as likely more stormwater permitting for the extra area. So what we've done is we've looked at the recreational opportunities for the site, and we don't see an opportunity to provide a lot more, like open meadow field type areas. We have the open space sort of area on lot one where we have a cistern, and we're providing a parking area for it as well as the mailbox. I can show you that better with this guy. So, in this general vicinity, we have a fairly large 2,600 square foot area that will be open. And we do have some fairly nice yard spaces associated with the building envelopes that we're providing here. So what we thought of in terms of open space was, well, let's try to achieve as many of the objectives that we've heard so far this project review. So one, we've provided a lot of frontage on this one, more than 25 feet, that's necessary. And if you're having issues seeing, let me kind of zoom into the open space. I see some squinting.
Yeah.
Sorry. So the property limit for the open space, when the plane catches up with me, is right where my cursor is, in this general corner here. It comes across, enters, basically gets clipped by the stormwater easement, and comes along the entire frontage all the way to Campbell Shore Road. So lots of frontage. The area is not entirely wetland. There is some upland. And what we thought was, this would dedicate a natural vegetated buffer to another neighbor and provide more of certainty that we don't have intrusion into the neighborhood. So that's where we, what we came up with, and we're open to suggestions and changes if you'd like others. It's still difficult to see.
No, that, I mean, that piece was fine. I was trying to reconcile it with your other comments around you. So the, is there anything?
So it's that blue hatch kind of slash here.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
But nothing on the other side, the flat area where the cistern is and?
That's all part of lot one.
All right.
Lot one extends all the way to that property limit.
Yep.
And it's necessary for the required area for that lot, for the number of dwellings.
Oh, well, because there's three dwelling units on it, or actually?
It really wouldn't matter. I mean, that lot would have started right there anyways and continued. But it, the, to get the 120,000, I believe I'm at 130,000 for that lot. 120 would be the minimum required area for that lot. I need that area of the cistern to be part of lot one. It's essentially, we're looking at this in terms of, and my client is as well, since we have multiple buildings on each one of them, so it would be multiple different families. And the intent is to maintain these under one ownership as apartments for some time. His, while it's under his ownership, everybody's going to have access to all of the yard space, and they'll all be able to share. So, that's essentially where we think we've addressed the open space. I, and in terms of, you know, the recreational ability of the use for that portion, it's still there. I mean, there are, walking through here doing surveys for the Army Corps, even right now when it's been really wet, or in the past when it was wet, we've, it's, you can clearly traverse that area. So there is recreational opportunities still with that area. It's just gonna be a natural wooded recreational area.
We did do a sidewalk out here.
We did.
Yeah, and it was in the springtime. It was pretty,
It was in the, was it in the spring or was it in the fall? It was the fall.
It was not green. I remember that.
It was fall, yeah.
Yeah.
Thoughts? Who wants to start?
Um, I'm trying to remember what this was like, but it, just looking at it on the map, it just looks, it looks like it's stripped with wetlands, and I don't know that it meets our normal way of thinking about open space. And while I appreciate that the other lots have large yards, we approved a subdivision a hot second ago, and the minute the approval happened, they came back and turned it into condos because, so the concept of like all shared disappeared in a minute, and you have the right to do that. So, I don't know. It doesn't quite seem like it's doing what open space is intended to do on this particular parcel. But you do have a very wet parcel, so I know you're challenged, and you want to keep your dry for more development.
No, quite frankly, we looked at actually putting it, I mean, unless the ordinance changes and allows for more density or something like that, where the, any future phase, it would not be affected by this open space, wherever I put it. So the retained land, even if I take an acre off of it, I'll still make the density that I, the maximum density. Maybe not even be able to get there because of other constraints. So quite frankly, we can put the open space wherever you guys like it. I just felt that I would be able to best address some of the concerns I've heard in the past by making this a long area that's completely accessible. It's on its own lot. You know, not with just 25 foot strip going between two lot lines, and not making an area that is inhibitive in terms of like, you know, there's a lot of development. I'm not gonna go where somebody else's picnic tables right next to you. I don't want to walk on a trail right next, you know, this is, this will be separate from the development. It's, and it's clear. It would provide opportunities to, I mean, you can cross, you can walk across the street. It's a step in most places. I had to do it several times when I traversed to get shots along that, you know, I had to get upland, wetland limit, high normal on it, and then the stream center line all the way through for like 200 feet. And I didn't have too many problems going five or 10 feet further up and crossing.
I'm curious for the rest of the board. Thanks.
Kenya?
I don't have opinion yet.
Struggling to love it.
Well, I mean, just, I can explain to you what else I've considered.
Yeah, sure.
So we considered just trying to achieve a strip along the road, so I just,
Can you put your plan back? Or, oh, maybe, okay.
So I figured, okay, we needed a 37,500 square feet ballpark, plus or minus. So I looked at going, well, I want this accessible. I want to kind of make sure that we're protecting our neighbors. Where do I put this area that it's not going to be developed, not going to be basically clear cut, you know, 10, 15 years later? And cause a big open space corridor, so we have a view corridor from one neighbor to the, a new neighbor. So like I said, I looked at a strip that just ran along the road, and it was, you know, 50, 60, 80 feet wide, you know? And that extended about 300 something feet up the road. Essentially, more or less to the well exclusion zone is a pretty good idea where it would be, that strip would end. So it encumbered the stormwater easement for the stormwater pond on the left, and the, I think 68 feet wide ultimately, and go over 300 and something feet. So we thought that would be okay, but I was like, well, it doesn't really do. I mean, yeah, we have an area that you can walk along, it's, but we don't, I'm not, I'm not doing anything to benefit a neighbor. I'm not adding value to what these people can use. The retained land will be wide open for anybody's use right now anyways. And going forward, most likely the initial ownership of this project into the next phase, if there is one, everybody will just be entitled to use the whole area as a community. There won't be like, you know, these three lots, you're restricted to this lot line. I know that doesn't make a difference in perpetuity, but that's the intent initially. I think the other opportunity for you guys to consider too is that if we do come back with another stage, I believe the open space could be amended because we're amending subdivision approval. So at that time, essentially, I'm just changing, reconfiguring lot four, or the retained area and the open space area. So keeping it all on that side, I thought would be appropriate as well. So it's not gonna affect any of the other lots that we're creating. The CCNRs for the HOA will be the same. They won't be saying that your community open space is here, and then it moves because it's all within this part of the lot that's not one of those three lots, or affect those three lots. So like I said, we can put this wherever you guys like it. I won't go to any suggestions. You know, I really would like discussion about where we stick it. I mean, honestly, I think I've demonstrated that we can provide the open space, and whatever you guys decide, we will be able to. So I think we're at the point where we've demonstrated the ability for preliminary approval, although I'd like to come in with final with all the other permits and have this open space kind of like really satisfying everybody, so.
Yeah, the, I mean, the strip idea would not do it for me.
No, it didn't make sense, and it doesn't effectively provide much value, so.
So I will say, what you've got going for you here is it does buffer to the neighbor, it buffers to the road, so it keeps the whole development tucked back in the woods, which is beneficial. The thing I don't love, and it happens on almost every open space subdivision since this was enacted, and I say it every time we vote on one, is that, you know, you're getting your density bonus for having an open space subdivision and all the benefits that come along with it.
No, this isn't open space.
Oh, you're right.
We're required to meet 5% of the total, and quite frankly,
Yep.
if we're gonna, if I may,
Yep.
I don't mean to push back on the 5%, I know it's not germane to this discussion tonight, but the lot is 730,000 square feet. The net density, net area for the lot is 500,000, 38. I have to apply that 5% to the total area, but I can't develop the total area. That seems a little wrong, too. I think the, ultimately, the 5% reflects the subdivision, and it says it, and a subdivision is the entire property. If I wanted to just develop one lot, the open space would be the same. And I think that's a little unfair, quite frankly. But granted, we, this, it doesn't really affect this project at all, so it's not germane again. But I just, it was one of those things that, this tripped us up. We hadn't experienced this before.
Right.
And, you know, on a conventional subdivision, kind of, I think it's my, maybe my first conventional subdivision with you guys, too. So I know Straight Line Road had a portion of it, but this is completely different. That was a minor piece, minor subdivision piece. So, yeah, like I said, we, I'd really like to not change the location of the open space between now and any future development. I'd really like it to be where you guys want it. So I'm open to suggestions. If you want me to provide a different one, I'm more than happy to. I don't know, I don't know a better spot. I don't see one really, just, it just jumps out at me as being good.
Top of the hill?
Well, top of the hill would be great, but I think then you're, you've now got, like, I kind of wanted to, when I visualize this, if you keep all the buildings in one area, and the open space in a separate area, it makes it a little bit better. If I put it at the top of the hill, it's gonna be between buildings. So that, another reason why I put it up front, too, is that I don't have any buildings on lot one in that area because of all the discussion we had about, you know, protecting those areas and that. So that upland area on lot one, it's suitable for recreation. It's right across the street from the open space. In fact, you're gonna park on that side if you want to park to access the open space. So I think you've got the upland portion that you're looking for. The lot one won't be developed more than is shown here. But again, like, not, not, I'm not fixed to it by any means.
I don't really love protecting something that's really already protected in practicality.
Quite frankly, if we, this upland area, I honestly considered, before we had lots of issues with, you know, the separation of neighbors, we were going to put a building in that, that area. The road would have essentially kind of weaved a little further over to the right and hooked more and ready to come straight in. So basically got to the corner on the north or the south, southe, southeast corner there where the jog in the property line is, and then yanked towards the cistern and come up more to the hill and gone around. We were gonna put one there.
We can't see where your point, or at least I can't.
Yeah, so one, there was going to be a lot right, essentially right where that open space callout is. So just like we were also trying to squeeze one in the open space, the upland area on lot one.
I mean, he's, he's got the buffering going for him. That's, that's a nice piece, like, to the neighbor and the road, and,
And it is.
and you're fully built out on one, so nothing else is gonna happen there.
So in that sense, it extends the green space, even if it's not technically part of the open space, which I like.
Yeah, and then, and you've got your picnic table area on the other side, you know? We're clearing that. It will be maintained as lawn and landscaped.
And in terms of wildlife, that's also, I don't know what the area on the neighbor that he doesn't control, but that looks like that's at least, it's not, it doesn't have houses on it, which, you know, I don't know, critters could walk across further if they wanted to. Maybe they're walking on pesticide lawn, I don't know, but.
Quite frankly, no, there aren't a lot of critters in that area because it was just recently clear cut, and the slash is everywhere, and which is a problem that we're trying to address, so.
I mean, I don't, I guess I don't have really any better ideas, like throughout the top of the hill, but without knowing what potential future plans you might have.
Well, I don't think we really consider future potential plans, quite frankly, because the reality is future potential plans come back for amendment, and we can relocate that, especially if the open space is not on the right side where it's going to affect existing lots. I mean, it does create a little bit of caveat for the attorney to draft HOA documents so that the open space can be adjusted, but it's not, that's not uncommon.
I think the, but the pickle is, although there is green space that is more upland on lot one, it is on lot one. So if lot one changed hands, then they could prevent people from using it. The critters could still do it if they wanted to come back, but.
Well, there's easement. We have a, we have an easement for the cistern area.
Yeah, but not the whole of that lot one, and you're not gonna do that. But I, I can't think of a better idea either, so I think it's, it's better than a strip and.
It's better than nothing.
Yes, yeah.
From that perspective.
And it isn't a true open space subdivision. It's just the 5%.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. That was.
Yeah, we don't get any shorter frontages or anything with this. Yeah, we, we don't get any shorter frontages or anything with this. It, it, quite frankly, the, the open space subdivision, we looked at, it didn't benefit us in this scenario.
That's something to consider. We're seeing people not using the open space, which we want them to use, but.
I guess for me, it's the, the buffering value kind of gets me over the, over the line. I mean, there are, you know, it's probably not the best human recreation area, but you can walk through there and it does give the creature habitat. I mean, I don't, I don't have anything that would be better, it would just be different and I like the buffering aspects to the neighbors.
Yeah.
That's, so.
Can I just ask one question about?
Oh, absolutely.
You said you're going to try and clean up some of the slash so that maybe both vegetation and critters can come back. Would that include this area too or just the area?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, quite frankly, the, the left side of the lot and, and, and some of the, the down slopes on the back of the proposed lots with the buildings on, that's where the slash is.
Yeah, no, I remember that.
And, and quite, it's, it predominantly, like the piles are in the wetlands. And I mean, some slash, some dead wood in wetlands is a benefit. It provides, but to the point where it's, it, it actually is really bad. I mean, it, it reduces the amount of habitat, it reduces the, the ability for the ground to absorb water like it's supposed to because these things will just soak and then leach out. It's, it's too bad that it was left in such bad state, but I think the benefit is for the town is that this client wants to address that. He wants this to be nice, he wants to go in, he's telling the DEP that I'm going in there and doing all this. It, it's not necessarily restoration, but he's going to do it on his own, so.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, having a landscaper as a client, kind of, he wants that to be the, you know, an aspect that draws people to this project. So I think what you'll find is that with that slash gone, you're going to have a lot more stable ground to walk on, much more opportunity to explore the area. There's, there's not a lot of, like, it's a lot of understory growth, so there's a lot of chance to, you know, just plow through it and, and make your own way. There are some animal trails out there that you can follow through that. And, and quite frankly, I mean, it is a really pretty site to walk, you know, once you, even, even going, just walking along the stream, basically beyond the, the neighbor's house right now with, it, it's, it's, you don't see, you get, you get off, like, you get past the stream where the road is, and fifty feet in, it's quiet, you don't hear the road traffic, you don't see any neighbors, don't see any houses. So I mean, my perspective is this is kind of a gem for an area. It's hard to find those places. I mean, right now I travel two to three hours to find peace and quiet.
I think we landed on that. Just a reminder that you need to add a note regarding the shared ownership and the no development clearing.
Yep, actually, we've already addressed that, but it's.
Okay. Anything on the other? I know that was obviously the, the big topic, so anything on the other three town staff comments? Are you good with all that?
Uh, yeah, I, it's, I mean, I reviewed them again this evening. I have no concerns with the, the comments for the staff. I mean, the driveway culvert for Lot Three, that will be clearly something that we can address when, as necessary. I don't think it's going to be a problem where at the top of the hill, there's no drainage, at the top of the hill, it's the bottom, but we'll find out. And i- if it is an issue, I mean, i- if it isn't required to be installed, we're just going to install it.
Okay. The board is good with the driveway permitting process? Okay, same.
Yep, and then so number two is the, the driveway culvert, the, and the site distance. Site distance, I clearly have the distance, but I can't measure it and tell you that it's there. I, the, I did, did write a narrative that's pretty descriptive about how we achieve the site distance, it's just the, like, I could have more than the minimum and I don't want to tell you it's the minimum. So like, it all depends on grades and everything else and how it's constructed, so.
But you can achieve the required distances, so.
Absolutely. I mean, it, it, we could achieve the required distance for like a thirty mile an hour speed limit, you know, we usually look at these at twenty-five. So I'm not concerned about that. Army Corps and DEP, those are all in the process. And then the deeds, we're, we're clear upon those. I've got to work out language with regards to base flood elevation because there is no base flood elevation associated with the stream, it's a Zone A, it just shows you the limit of the flood plain, but it does not give you an elevation like a Zone AE would or any other zone where they show you different profile sections through the, the river or stream. So, but with regards to that, the stream is at an elevation of about two ninety to three hundred. Even if we were to say have a flood that brought that elevation up to three oh five, to be ten even, I'm still five feet above it with my lowest building, so.
Okay.
So I think that's the last one and I, I don't have any issues with that.
All right, sounds good. We've already had our public hearing and there's nobody here, so I won't reopen it. And we've covered our discussion points, I think, unless anyone had anything additional you wanted to bring up.
Nope.
Okay. So is there a motion for completeness?
I move to find the application for SE Development for Planning Board Preliminary Plan Approval Complete for the proposal to create a three lot subdivision on the seventeen point two one plus or minus acre parcel at thirty Campbell Shore Road, Tax Map Fifty-Six, Lot Seventeen dash nineteen dash zero two in the Rural Residential Agricultural Zoning District and the Shoreland Zoning Stream Protection District. Proposal subject to Shoreland zoning standards and to major subdivision review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Motion for preliminary plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, I, well, it usually says I'm, I move to request, a request by SE Development represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers for Planning Board Preliminary Plan Approval of a proposal to create a three lot subdivision on the seventeen point two one plus or minus acre parcel, thirty Campbell Shore Road, at Tax Map Fifty-Six, Lot Seventeen dash nineteen dash zero two in the Rural Residential Agricultural Zoning District, the Shoreland Zoning Stream Protection District. This proposal subject to, subject to Shoreland zoning standards and to major subdivision review and is subject to the following conditions listed one through seven and condition number eight, which is noted as a placeholder but is going to also be a condition of preliminary approval.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? All right, you are preliminarily approved.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. We'll see you back here. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is. I move we adjourn.
All in favor? And that's also unanimous. Close the meeting at eight thirty-nine. Thanks, everyone.